Okay, it is the appointed time. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the July twenty twenty-three zoning board of appeals meeting. My name's Kelly Donovan and I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone over here. State your name and address for the record and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. The floor will then be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony can be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate, make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted. For those applicants who wish not to stay through deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decisions. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have four members present that constitutes quorum. I will call the roll now. Ms. Resnity is excused, Mr. Matzo. Ms. Mucci. Mr. Landers.
Present.
And Mr. Donovan is present. I did see that we had minutes. From June, June. You guys got a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
Yeah, how they look to you?
Fine.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June.
Okay, can I get a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that is passed. Thank you for preparing the minutes for it. We appreciate it. I love that format. And we're now ahead of schedule, so we have to wait for a little while. Does anybody know a good joke? I guess that wouldn't be good in the public record with it. I heard a good one that was. I can't remember. It was a perfect dad joke. And since I'm a dad, I can tell it badly. We've got about seven, eight minutes to, to wait.
Anything interesting else going on that we need to talk about?
Oh, I don't, I can't think of anything.
There was that training that was available, but that was today?
That was today, twelve thirty, yes.
Yeah. Sorry, that it didn't, it didn't fit. I would have rather been at that meeting than the one I was at. Let's put it that way.
So I, I think technically you can introduce the case, you just cannot open the public hearing until the announced time. So, but that's up to you.
I'm fine with that. So we can hear the background and all that? Okay. Okay, our first case of the evening is thirty-seven Saratoga Ave, Paul Himco. Area of variances for a twelve by twenty garden utility, which wouldn't shed where one accessory shed is allowed per residential lot. With a maximum area of two hundred square feet and no dimension greater than sixteen feet. And a side setback for two and a half feet where five feet is the minimum requirement in the R one residential single unit rolling district. Hello. Welcome to our meeting.
Yep.
I'm assuming you're Paul?
I am Paul.
And your residence is thirty-seven Saratoga? Okay, tell us about your, your application here.
Okay, a little while back, I called. Uh, and asked about, uh, building another shed. They said, I'm only allowed to have one detached garage and one shed. So I wanted to go a little bigger. Because I've got a few acres of land in town of Binghamton, and they have a utility trailer, enclosed trailer, and the sides collapse in the roof. I think that's ten by sixteen. So I don't go up there that much. And I figured I'd build a bigger shed. Put it in my backyard because I got to bring my riding mower down and my ATV. And quite a few things put in it. I've got, uh, my snow blowers, I got a big one, little one, because I got a big driveway. Uh, mobility scooters, my girlfriends, my, got my dad, so I got three of them, and one for parks. And, uh, I've got, you know, another push mower and a lawn roller and no matter what you have, you still don't have enough room. So on the shed right now, it's got most of the materials. On the left-hand side, it sheds a little cot. I have well over three and a half feet setback. I'm just shy of four feet, maybe inch or two. Uh, on the back side, there's a fence, uh, the frost kind of move things around. I have at least, uh, oh, well over two and a half feet and one spot, I'm shy about two inches. So almost three feet. I, uh, had the retire twenty-one years ago, bad back disability, heart and stuff, so. You know, my garage, I've got like a little workshop in there and, you know, I could only fit one car in the garage. I used to do the work on my car, but, um, it's getting rough for me. The older you get. Sucks getting old. I just turned seventy the other day. Yeah, July fifth, my brother was helping with the shed, uh. He passed away July four unexpectedly. So he never got to see it. So have any questions?
Members of the board, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Sure, true.
Um, so when you called about the shed. Were you informed about the size?
No, I just figured my other shed's a metal one. And it was ten by fourteen.
Right.
And I just, you know, it's a shed, you know, people got the shed wherever they want. In their backyard, like my dad, his was, you know, just enough to get the lawnmower through what? That's a little over two foot because your lawnmower's twenty-four inches wide. I probably should have asked, but I guess they volunteer any information. So.
Do you remember which department you called about the shed? Was it, was it planning or did you call for permits or?
Code?
Code? Is, is that something that requires?
This was a while back.
Something like.
And, uh.
If it's over how many?
Yeah, basically twelve by what sixteen, you're okay. And I wanted to go twelve, yeah, twelve by sixteen. So I thought it was two hundred, two hundred feet.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm trying to determine how we got here.
May, it must be zoning. But this was a while back.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I want to pour my metal shed down if I knew it'd be a problem. I mean,
Well, so did this start with a, a code violation?
Yeah, that woman doesn't like me. She's hearing her husband are getting along and.
Well, any other questions from members of the board?
I have one. Is your garage detached or detached?
Detached. Yeah, Greg was over and.
Yeah, one shed, a metal shed, ten by four.
Ten by fourteen.
And this proposed, you've started the building.
Yeah.
Twelve by twenty.
Yeah, the floor's there, everything, the walls are up and.
The floor is what, concrete?
Uh, no, no, it's wood.
Wood?
Wood.
Okay.
And the steps.
Yeah, it's.
The steps down in the bank, Greg's seen that.
Okay, I just wondered, I just wondered what stage you were at.
Okay. Yeah. And no one could see it. You can't see it from the road because there's a dip there.
So was there, is there anybody that has, um, you know, called, emailed?
Yeah, we got a letter today, um, and I can read that into the record when you open the public hearing, whatever.
Okay.
No, I'll listen to the letter first.
So I have another question. So are you doing all this work yourself? Do you have somebody doing it for you?
I'm having some friends do it. They work for, uh, Mr. Goats. They're doing it on their own. And my brother was helping, but no longer. And I'm doing what I can.
And it, nobody was aware or thought to check into the side thing?
No.
Or they did it?
Everyone's upset, but.
Right.
No one was aware.
So there was not a permit obtained?
I applied for the permit.
Oh, now, is, is there a? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I applied and paid for the permit the same time I turned the paperwork in for the, uh, zoning variance.
Alright.
Thank you very much. Stick around. We may have questions for you if that's all right.
Yep.
Um, but I think at this point, we're going to get started with opening the public hearing. So everybody, anybody who has a comment will have a chance to. You can go right over there. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get the right one.
Yeah.
Uh, that one's not there yet. Um, okay, I, I would just like to, uh, make note that this is a secret type two action. No further environmental review is required. And I would like to move to open the public hearing for thirty-seven Saratoga Ave. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to, uh, mention that I checked on Unicity, which is where we keep code violations, decisions and things like that. He applied for a permit in May of this year.
There's no other, nothing else to note.
Uh, no, just Greg's initial violations on there.
Very good. All right, then, at this time, anyone present wishing to speak in favor or against the, uh, variance for this shed, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. While we're waiting, uh, you said you had a, a letter for middle?
Yes, this is from Heather Duel of three seventy Conklin Avenue. I'm writing to you as I'm out of town, cannot make the meeting tonight. I'm a close neighbor of Mr. Himco's. We've been good neighbors for at least twenty-five years. Several years back, he had a small garage and asked if I would sign a variance so he could replace the older building with a newer garage. I agreed to sign off and the building he put up is huge. It's bigger than his actual house. He also put windows all around it and one is facing my backyard. Uh, he also has a twelve by eight foot covered utility trailer that he's using as storage. It's full amenities going to this outbuilding, which I'm not sure what it's used for. It's heated and air conditioned, full two stories, and you can see, she can see it that it can be used as housing in the future. Uh, the small metal shed he is replacing was approximately eight by eight, one story. The new building is twice the size and too close to the property line. I kindly asked the city of Binghamton to reject Mr. Himco's application for the new construction building as it is again way too close and overlooking what little yard I have. I also have concerns he may market the property in the future as a multiple family lot. When I'm in my yard, all I can see is his garage with a large window facing my house. I have young kids that use the yard and while Mr. Himco has been a nice neighbor, he is older and who knows what kind of people occupy this property in the future and what they will use it for.
All right. Well, thank you. That was the only one, right?
That's the only one.
Okay. Sure, what would you like to add?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, but would you be able to, if you do you want him on, on the microphone, that way we can, the recording can figure it out.
Yeah. It probably is.
The back of their garage probably covered three quarters of my shed. And what they'd see is maybe three feet of that. I, uh, Greg's seen it. The big green garage they have, it's a two-story garage.
How tall is this shed going to be when it's done?
Uh.
At the peak?
Okay, it steps down in the gully and I, I got a bank probably about.
Like up to the eaves of your garage?
The roof would probably start just above the fence line.
Okay. Yeah. Always. Yep.
And the utility trailer I have in the back. I got my stuff from the shed and put it in there till I got, uh, shed done, licensed and everything.
And then is the utility trailer going away?
Yeah.
Okay. You had a question?
What is the other structure that she's referring to on your property?
Pardon?
There was another structure.
First thing she was right, referring to was the garage.
The garage.
Which she thought was bigger than it was planned to be.
Okay, but wasn't there another structure?
Utility trailer and this, and there was a, a metal shed before this.
Okay, so she was kept, but she said it was air conditioned and.
I think that's the garage.
Is that the garage?
Is, that was, that was my question. The garage, is that a living space or is that just set up as a shop?
Oh, just garage. I got.
Is there an upstairs?
Yeah.
For storage or is it like level?
Door.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just like. Yeah. Okay.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, it's a long, narrow workspace. Okay. Yeah, sounds about right. Okay. Then, then that fits the, what's picture also.
I, I, I have a question. All right, since this is on two skids or what are they, six by six is eight by eight, four by fours, whatever? Why can't we move it forward away from her property line?
Because it's down the bank. Uh, I don't know.
I mean, it doesn't even look like it's fifty percent built yet. I'm looking at it here. You've just got the two side walls up, possibly the back and some of the floor. And it's not the two side walls, they're just the two by fours. I, I, I mean, right there would eliminate a lot of problems just moving it three feet forward.
The, I'd have to get, uh, some kind of excavator and with long forks and like I'd say, uh, Greg's saying it's down in embankment. And.
So then you've got a permanent structure in the back if it's down in embankment.
Well, there, it's a possibility of being moved. I'd have to tear everything up and my driveway is only ten foot wide. I had to take the neighbor's fence down to get a cement truck in the back.
You've got concrete in there?
In my garage, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not talking about your garage. I'm asking you about the shed.
No.
Like I said, it looks like you got it only on, I don't know what they are. It says stone foundation here, but it doesn't look like it. That's completed.
Right, because I, I got.
Oh, this is.
Yeah, bad enough, I'm gonna. Who?
Well, showing me, I'm, I'm seeing the fence in the background. This is where I'm confused. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just confused. This is why I'm asking you. You've got the shitting behind, the sheds behind it. I mean, the fence is behind the shed, correct? And then on the side, you got the fence along the side.
Right.
What's stopping you from putting something in there to move the shed forward? That's what I'm confused on. I'm sorry.
Well, really can't move it forward because you're coming into the bank. And I'm gonna have to take some of the bank out to have my doors open, the swinging doors. And then I'd really have mess.
The, the variances for the side setback, not, not the back. And this, the neighbor that submitted the complaint is the neighbor behind you, correct? Is your, is, is the neighbor that submitted that complaint, is the neighbor behind you? Behind your lot? Is that, or is she your side neighbor?
Uh, behind, behind.
Okay. Yeah, and so the variance that he needs is for the sides, is for the side set.
Side and the back too, because, you know, like I say, I'm just shy of an inch or two from three feet from the back.
The rear property line.
Right.
Alright, so it's.
And the side, I'm inch or two shy from four feet.
Well, that makes you.
And the garage, I think.
Two and fourteen inches. Because you're supposed to have a five foot setback, correct? Yeah.
I.
On both sides. Right, you're supposed to have a five foot set back.
I had a variance for the garage because the previous pre-existing garage was actually even built on the neighbor's backyard because he had a big catalog. So I went for a variance for my garage. I forget what it was, three feet. But just be on the safe side, but I have like, I don't know, four and a half feet or something, so I could get a ladder, you know, for maintenance. So I do have a variance for the setback on the garage. And the shed's gonna be even with the garage in the back. So it's not really gonna go back any further than the garage. Which I took some pictures.
No.
Okay, we'll remind everybody, the public hearing is still open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed can.
There's a lot of weight there right now.
All bad.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tried to move it.
It'd probably take a good size.
I mean, I saved up a lot of money to get, you know, get the shed built. Like I said, I I want to know.
I'm assuming this, I'm assuming you're custom building this. It's being built per your specifications. It's not a, it's not a kit.
Right, right.
Is there anything to keep you from making it smaller than twenty feet long?
Yeah.
Could you make it any smaller than twenty feet? Just, just asking. It's not finished, so it's better that we ask before it's done.
I'd say no, let's take the chainsaw to it. I mean, don't want to do that. And why take some off the back? It's still gonna be twelve foot wide.
That if it was only sixteen by twelve, it would meet the code regu, it would meet the zoning regulation. If you could cut it to twelve by sixteen. Then it, then you wouldn't need a variance. Am I correct?
Yeah.
On the side, right, on the side.
But at least then. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if she's complaining, and what difference would it make if it was to her in the backyard?
You would be offer, you would be offer.
Four foot long, it's still or if I, it, it was possible, bring it down to ten, but the shed's still gonna be there. You know.
Maybe. It might be there, it might not. That's what we're here to talk about.
Yeah.
Then you would be within the five foot offer setback and she was the one complaining, the person on the left side, I'm, I'm assuming is not complaining about.
Yeah, they're not here. We have no letters on.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm assuming too.
Any other questions, you guys? Okay. All right, then we're gonna move on to our deliberations. You can go back and have a seat. Thank you very much for your participation. Yep. Yep. Um, seeing no one else coming forward to speak in favor or against, I would make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing for thirty-seven Saratoga Ave. Can I get a second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we have the criteria to go through. And we have two, two variances to look at, the overall size, the one dimension uh, and the setbacks. So is an undesirable change to grant any of these variances? Is there, or was there a reasonable alternative? Is it a substantial request? Is there an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions? And was it, whether or not it was self-created? Everybody would always like to have more storage space than what they have. It's, it's almost a given. And so I understand that a hundred percent. But if I had more space, I would just get more stuff. So undesirable change regarding the overall size of the building, the twenty-foot dimension, how do we feel about that? Is, does it create an undesirable change to the neighborhood?
I don't find a problem with the size of it. I, I'm just finding a problem with, yeah, it's got a small embankment in front of it, but I still don't understand why it can't be moved forward. And it's like I said, it's not fifty percent done. It looks to me like it's maybe thirty, twenty-five, thirty percent done. Because there's no solid walls on the side. It's just two before frame. That can be taken apart and moved forward.
Good. It could, not easily, but it could.
No, yeah, I, I understand. It's just I have no problems with the size.
Okay, but sticking with the size, I really don't have a problem with the size. We have granted variances for this size structure before. It's not our desired size. We, that's why we have zoning that says two hundred square feet or sixteen by twelve.
But it does seem like we get cases that want twenty.
No.
That number seems to come up.
Yeah. Yeah, we're right. On the other hand, if we're not going to consider ever granting a variance, then there's no point in us ever talking about this thing. This is one of the things we're tasked with talking about. Right. Right.
Personally, I wish she had, I wish she had made a little stronger point, why you need the twenty over the sixteen or eighteen. Um, and, but it didn't, but I still don't have a problem with the twenty. I don't, I don't see that a big enlargement from sixteen to twenty.
Okay, let's talk about reasonable alternative. Um, I'm not. I mean, I, I think there are reasonable, making it. Two feet shorter.
Right.
One foot shorter. Three feet shorter. Any of those choices are a choice. Um, it would have been in the applicant's. Uh, best interest, and he got more good information from the city, that would have been helpful to the applicant, to get better information.
Right.
And so that's a, that's a lack of communication, which we can't correct here, but just to be noted. Is there a reasonable alternative, yeah, make it a little small? Is it a substantial request, two hundred forty square feet versus two hundred square feet? I would, again, I would say overall, no.
I would agree.
I mean, I, we've seen larger, we've approved larger. Um, there have been times when smaller ones aren't appropriate.
No, I agree, I would say this is a moderate request.
Yeah, it's a little bigger, um. I think the average person, uh, going, if it's not Greg, or, or me or Ernie, it was an average person. They're not gonna know the difference between the sixteen by, by twelve or a, or twenty by twelve.
Right. Especially with the cer- certain sized yard, other yards are bigger.
And it is in the back corner of the yard, the only person, but honestly, is gonna see it is the applicant and the, the neighbor in the back. Does it cause an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? To grant the larger building? I would argue that it has no, no effect on the physical or environmental conditions. I'm going to assume that the old metal shed that was there was falling apart, and it's probably an improvement overall.
Has it been removed?
I believe, yeah, it has to, but the old sheds removed, right? Your old metal shed that was there, where the new. Gone.
Okay, well, that makes my. I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah. Alright, so we've talked about the, uh, the overall size, how about the setbacks? Would granting any of the setback requirements be an undesirable change to the neighborhood?
We've granted setbacks for other sheds.
And lesser, lesser distance.
Yes, right, right on the property line.
Right up to and on.
Yes.
And in driving around the neighborhood, I saw a good share of, of garages and whatnot that are right on the property line.
Absolutely.
Um, whether it was previous zoning that was in place, and it was okay at that time, and grandfathered in, or people just not knowing. I don't know what the case is, but it's not unusual. Is there a reasonable alternative, and this is what we were kind of talking, we have kind of about. I'm, the side one, I'm not sure there is a reasonable.
No, I, I don't.
That balances it in the space that's available.
And you're allowed twelve foot.
Yeah. But the other dimension, I, I wonder about.
But he said he got a variance for his garage back there.
And it's closer than what the shed's going to be. So. Still sticking with the setbacks. I'm not sure there is a reasonable alternative, except in the back.
Alternative, like I said, is either shorten the shed or move it forward.
Which, which.
Which they might have to cut out some of the bank, or push it forward and build a little higher foundation in the back. Raise it up.
Does the granting of either of these variances of the setback ones adversely impact the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
I don't think, I don't believe it.
And again, it's self, so this is self-created.
Yeah.
So that gets us any closer to an idea of, uh. A motion or not?
I can't think of one, to be honest with you, to make a motion. How about you, Ernie?
The one suggestion, if, if we approved at eighteen, would it meet the, the.
The setback.
The setback that it needs.
This is the setback on the six foot.
Get it to the five feet or no?
It just wanted.
Taking the two feet off the back.
Yeah.
That would fit, but the side would not, the side would still be.
No, we'd still have to approve the sides.
No, neither, neither way, neither, neither for or against. Just the back neighbor. And that doesn't have to be our only reason either, it's, it's something to take into account. Yeah. Of the shed?
If you can't, if you could move it up, so it's five feet, and over, so it's five feet, you don't need a variant, correct?
Except for.
Except for the size. The size, but we're looking at the setback right now. Yeah.
I mean, I know it's work, and I hate to have them do it, but that, that way, there'd be nobody that can complain about. I have no, I have no problems with the size. It's the quality of life issue that I'm having with the neighbor out back. And it is technically an issue that way.
So to either move it towards the house by two feet, or shorten it by two feet.
Move it over, yeah, or shorten it by two feet and move it over towards the garage two feet, that'd be, there's five foot on five foot on both sides.
Then, then it'd be good to go.
And what I'm looking here, the garage door, the doors that he's putting on there, there's doors that are opening from this paperwork. It's not gonna, nothing's gonna interfere with it.
Sounds like you're ready for some kind of a motion.
Yeah, I mean, if he's willing to do that, I have no problems with that.
Should we ask, can we ask him first if it's something he's willing to do?
Yeah, if that'll help you make a decision, sure. Then we, I can make a decision.
Yeah. I hate to ask you to do this again, but could you come on back, we, we want to discuss a potential solution.
I have no problems.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Our main issue is the closeness, or the distance from the back of the shed to the back fence. You said that's two and a half feet roughly?
It's close to three foot.
If it would, if it was two feet further towards your house, I think everything else we could live with.
But.
Is that right?
And, and move it over towards the garage.
And move it towards the garage too.
Then I wouldn't have much room for maintenance between the shed and the garage.
Yeah, you'd just be moving it over two foot, you'd have just about as much room as, it looks like you have about five to six feet now. Between the garage and the shed.
From what's constructed to the garage.
What would be the purpose of moving it over?
If you, if you moved at least a, if you moved the two feet over, you wouldn't have any variance needed for the side.
For the setbacks or the side.
For the sides.
Right. And all you would need is the variance for the size of the building.
I'd need the variance for the back.
No. No, because we're, because I don't think we're gonna, willing to, to, uh. I don't think we're willing to negotiate on the back dimension.
Okay, now, if she's, the woman in back. It's too big, now if I moved it over.
I don't have.
She's gonna see more of the shed.
We don't have an issue with the size of the shed. This is what we were talking about, most of us, so if you moved it away from there. And, and gave her her five feet like she's asking for, and moved it over, two feet over closer to your garage.
But.
I think you'd have a better shot at getting the variance, that's what I'm asking.
She would see.
We, we don't care what she would see then, in that case, it's not what she would see, it's what we're willing to agree to.
Yes.
And grant you.
I don't know how to be able to move it over, because the skids are. Lengthwise.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
I mean, you, you don't have the walls up yet, you've just got, uh, two before structures, I mean, yeah, you're gonna have to take something apart.
Yeah, how are you gonna slide it over?
If you take something apart, you're just gonna be sliding the floor over.
Yeah, with what?
With enough manpower, or a machine of some sort.
There's a lot of weight there.
I understand, I get it.
I don't.
What's that?
We'll come over and take an inch.
Yeah.
There's a lot of weight, I need an army.
Yeah.
But, like I say, it's down the bank, you can't, you can't really get in there.
Yeah, see, I'm having, with the picture, I'm having a hard time seeing how steep.
Plus, the driveway is only ten foot wide to get a ma-, a big machine like an excavator. Have take neighbor's fence down.
Well, if it's not movable from where it is, the only option is to shorten it on the back side.
Yeah, kinda screwed, really.
By at least two feet on the back side.
That's the only other option.
So it's either move it or shorten it. And I think those are our only two options at this point, that we're kind of.
Yeah, that we're asking.
You may cut two feet off the backside?
Shorten it by two feet. And then we can grant the side variance and the overall size variance, because you'll still be over the size. But we, we'd be willing to grant the variance, I'm pretty sure.
That would be the only possibility I'd see.
Okay.
But it's still.
It's not perfect, and our, our world here is not perfect, but it's better than the rules that exist. Uh, where alternately, you may have to take it down.
Okay, now, like I say, the fro-, the fence isn't perfectly straight.
That's fine, we, none are.
It's like bow, you know, from the frost even, so. Try to bring it over by. Well, it's cut two feet off, I may.
Square up the building at two feet, we'll take your word for it, and Greg will be checking on you.
It, it'd have to be five feet from the property line. So, you know, the fence may be bowed, but the property line is where it is, maybe if you have pins back there.
Is that fence right on the property line, I'm gonna imagine it is. Most of them.
Some are, some are, you know, I mean, it depends how long ago the fence was put up, because.
Yeah, well. I could take corner to corner. With a string and get it the best I can.
Squi-, you want it to be square, don't square it to the fence, you'll never be square.
Right, I mean, you know, I don't want, wouldn't want it to, uh. Say, hey, you still don't have five feet, you know, I mean, I'd have Greg come out, look at it, or whoever.
We're, we're not gonna be, we're gonna word it so that it'll be with approximately five feet. As best as can be determined.
Off the. And I'll be all set on my left-hand side.
Yes, we just have to go through the process of voting on it, but yes.
Well. I guess I probably live with that, I mean, I don't really have any.
Your, your options are limited. Right, and the other one takes an awful lot of labor.
Right.
So. This one's gonna take some labor too.
All they gotta do is get a chainsaw now.
Circular saw, work it, also.
You're gonna put us through all that work.
Well, it's that or don't build it.
Just for.
That's the cho-, we're, we're giving you a really good option, we really are.
Yeah, do the best you can, and, you know, I appreciate what you could do, I mean. You know?
I, I take into consideration your neighbors too, as far as that goes, and it, it is, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's a stickler, and this way, if you're five feet off her line, like she likes, then she can't complain to you about it, but.
Like, right now, it's even with the garage, I've got the setback for the garage, so. It's up to you people, I mean, but, what? I don't know.
Well, we're gonna make a determination, and hopefully you can live with it, if you, if not, you can talk to planning again.
Yeah, I mean. But let all your, let all your friends know. Like I say, right now, it's even with back to the garage.
Right, but I, I will state again.
Whatever you gotta do.
Make sure when you're building things, make sure you do full research, what's permitted, what's not, what you need permits for, what you don't.
Oh, I know now.
These things.
Yeah, well, you want for a variance for the garage, you said.
Yeah.
Yeah. You should have considered it too when you were building the shed.
Yeah, well, I had to really look into that, because. The garage was built, he said, two feet on a property, it did go into a property.
It is a nice, solid-looking garage.
Yes, it is.
Okay, we, we gotta move on, we got another case to hear tonight, thank you for your participation, we're, we're gonna finish up here.
You already determined this?
And we haven't determined fully, but we're, we're that close.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure it's something you'll be able to live with.
Alright, when would I know, then?
We'll know as soon as we're done voting. And the official decision will come out of planning within the next few days. They, they have the write a decision letter, I have to sign off on it. You have to sign off on it as well, and it'll be within the week.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, officially, you'll let me know.
And then you, then you can process your permits and everything.
Okay.
Okay.
I get out of here.
You certainly can, thank you.
Thank you for.
Okay, John, you have a question to make?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. The shed, but not by twelve by twenty, but twelve by eighteen foot.
Yes.
The size of it, to bring the back forward. To keep it approximately five foot off the property line.
Correct.
And leave, and give him approval for the side setback at the three foot, if I'm not mistaken. So he can leave it where it is partially built now. Uh, so the total size of the shed would be twelve foot by eighteen foot.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous, thank you very much, good luck going forward. Alright, second variance application for the evening is. Eighteen Kendall Ave, Michael and Deborah Dunlap. Come on down.
Pricing right. Sounds like pricing is right.
Yeah, I know. Hi, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Dunlap, eighteen Kendall Ave.
Is the bu-, is the light green there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Deborah Dunlap, eighteen Kendall Avenue, Finghamton.
What's about your request for variance?
We requested a variance to widen the drive, the existing driveway from eighteen feet to twenty-five.
Maybe move, yeah.
Closer, okay. Okay, so we requested a variance to widen the driveway from eighteen feet to twenty-five feet. Um, the project itself, um, has no environmental impact. There's no encroachment on other properties, um, as we have a double lot. And the outer edge of the proposed additional footage on the driveway would be approximately thirty feet. additional footage on the driveway would be approximately thirty feet from the property to the west.
That's how hard it is to the neighbor's line. Even when you're done, it's gonna be thirty feet from the edge of the concrete. Okay.
Because it's a full double lot.
Okay.
It's, the, the project itself is, is an improvement to the existing driveway. Existing driveways in disrepair. Um, concerns, um, about property value. Um, the existing, just disrepair hasn't impacted property value at this point. Um, doing research on the Broom County parcel search site. Um, our property from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three has increased eleven thousand plus in value. Property values of the surrounding properties um, have not been impacted by construction projects at eighteen Kendall Avenue. Jason Properties on the south side of Kendall Ave, across the street from us. Um, from uh, five Brookfield Road to nine Kendall Ave have increased in value again from twenty-two to twenty-three on average over nine thousand dollars. And the adjacent properties on the north side of Kendall, which would be our side, have increased from twenty-two to twenty-three on average, um, ninety-six hundred dollars. And again, that information is based on the online information from County Parcel Site.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add before we have questions for you?
I think the biggest thing is that we're trying to improve the existing driveway that is in dis, disrepair. Um, we do utilize the forward portion of the drive for our summer furniture. So the cars are further back.
Mm hmm.
Um, as it exists now, it's tight for our vehicles. So that's why we're looking for the addition.
Okay. Um, members of the board, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, um, from some of the letters there that have been admit, uh, proposed to us. They're concerned with what you plan on parking in there.
Our existing vehicle.
Because they were talking about trailers and different equipment. That's what they were concerned with.
Bike, well, bike is self-employed.
Correct.
Periodically, there's been a, a work trailer there. It's not the intent to have that parked there full time.
Okay.
Um, at one point, we had building materials stored in that. So it was, it was an enclosed space to be able to store the materials.
Okay. And you're definitely thirty feet, about thirty-two, it says approximately. And when you put this driveway in, correct, from the other property lines?
If it, if it's extended to twenty-five feet wide, there's, there's, um.
Thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two, yeah, we measured thirty-two feet.
I see your, the driveway does, is in disrepair. I see that. It, it looks like in, in, you guys lived there quite a while.
Almost.
It looks like there was originally a one lane, single lane, and then there was an addition of a wedge.
Kind of, yeah.
I, I have a question. When you say you're gonna park your vehicles there, how many vehicles do you own that you plan on parking in?
Well, we each have a vehicle now. I mean, I have a car. He has a truck. Um, there are times when, depending if he comes from a, from a work um, location, there may be an extra vehicle with, you know, a work van. He has is a snow plowing business as well. So sometimes there are two pickup trucks in the driveway as well as my car. And he's got no one. He has multiple pickup trucks because of his business. So when, um, in the winter, the snowplow truck is usually parked in the driveway. So that when he gets up at, you know, three o'clock in the morning.
Makes it convenient for him to plow to your driveway.
Exactly. He went, hit three o'clock in the morning, leaving the house instead of go down to a shop and pick it up.
It's snow anymore.
Yeah.
I hope not.
Yeah. And then they show we can get five feet.
You're saying your car is pickup, like it's no pickup.
A snow, yeah, a plow truck.
Or if he's coming home from a job, which I've done with my trucks.
Right.
You park it in the driveway temporarily and then leave.
Yeah, I understand that. I think I read someone commented on a motorhome. Do you have a motorhome?
We have a motorhome, but it's stored elsewhere.
Out there.
But it'd still be their motorhome, so I don't see why they can park it there.
No, I, I absolutely agree. You have a driveway.
Yeah. To be able to park your equipment, your, you know.
And then your intent to then is to extend it to go to, uh, the retaining wall at the side, at the back, at the rear of the existing building structure.
Exactly, yes. The, the intent is to, to start it at the back of the existing garage and bring it forward.
Bring it forward. And do you have this timed out? I know that there was some, um, in some of the um, letters that we received back that the timeliness of some of your other home repairs have not been as timely as the neighbors would appreciate. So do you have some, um, like specific time on this?
It, we, we need it to be on record. I'm sorry. What, wait, we could, wait, we could bring in Mike. I think we can get their mobile. I forget these things. We used to have all the plugins up here.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have technology.
Uh, the projects that we've had in, in the past, I've been doing myself when I have time to do them. Well, the last three years, I've had severe medical problems from back surgery to hip surgery to knee surgery. And it's just been one thing after another, gone blind in one eye and they've, they've got that back on track. And that's why the front of the house hasn't been done. Uh, I am working on it as I can right now. In fact, I, I plan on having it done very shortly. Uh, this project here would be contracted out. I don't do heavy equipment stuff. And so once we get an approval and we get all the, uh, Binghamton precast right now is figuring out what we need to do and how we need to do it. Um, and once we get that and the price on it and everything, we would hire a contractor to come in and do it. So it would be a, you know, a fairly quick job. They, what they plan on doing is putting up the wall and taking the um, driveway that's in disrepair right now and using that for fill where we're bringing up the, the backside. And then because we are coming up, the, the amount we're coming up, they want that to settle before they pour concrete. So it would be a gravel driveway for probably, I would say, one season possibly. Just so everything settles so that when we do pour the concrete, you don't have cracks in it and so on.
So it would be reasonable to say that it could be done by next late next spring.
Probably, I would say more like in the summer because you wanna go through a season with it, you know, a frost and, and the rain and everything and driving on it just to compact it all down. But it would be, it would, it would been, it wouldn't be any different than any other driveway, a gravel driveway. Um, but it will, it, it would look nicer than it does right now.
Thank you.
And it, as a temporary thing, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And we, we acknowledge our projects have been very drawn out again, because no excuses, no excuses, but Michael's had a lot of medical issues and doing it work himself. We, we just keep extending the building permits.
That can be difficult.
Yeah, gravel is not a permitted driveway material, so it would not. It's not legal to use it as a, as a driveway if it's gravel. It would have to be concrete, asphalt, pavers, or something permanent that wouldn't track mud and dust off the property. Um, so you know, I'm not sure how the board wants to approach that, but leaving it as gravel for a year would not, would not be permitted.
Okay, then we can, we can have it compacted. I mean, it's, it's just I would hate to see the driveway cracked.
What is the finished product gonna be?
Finished product's gonna be concrete.
Oh, concrete.
Yes.
Okay.
Which, I mean, a thirty thousand dollar project. Um.
I get it.
It's a big project.
My neighbor across the street from me is having it done right now, and they started today, Tuesday, last Thursday. That, that's what they're doing. They compact it. Then for it.
Right.
They finished it up today. But.
Yeah, that would require a different kind of fill than, than the recycled.
Yeah.
Back to.
But it went for.
Yeah. Um, I have a question for the, uh, planning regarding the, uh, curb cut. What is the approved curb cut? For a.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet.
Can that, we can, we can override that?
The traffic board would have to.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Cause every, yeah, I've been through it.
That's up to the traffic board because that's an opening onto the public right away.
Oh, yeah.
This, the thing, this, the thing about the, the, the lot. It, it's considered, it was considered a building lot when we bought the house. It, it was a separate house number and everything. So if we'd have left it that way, we wouldn't even be here today because that piece of lot was able to have another eighteen feet of driveway. Uh, according to the, there's, um, the planning board or the, uh, code enforcement where I went up and, and.
So you combined the property together.
We combined it and because we combined it, we're, we're here for four feet.
Twenty Kendall.
Is what it comes to.
Right.
The, the lot was twenty and then twenty-two was the house.
But we could approve it and traffic can deny.
They could deny the apron, yeah, but he would still have a wider driveway. Yeah.
If, if I can do a six-foot curb cut, it doesn't break my heart, but I, I, it would, it would look, it would look better with the cut.
Be more useful, I guess.
Yes, and it would look better with the cut.
Right.
And there's no restriction on a wide. He can have driveway once you're how far away from the curb cut.
The driveway does have a maximum width of eighteen feet as well.
Oh, okay, they both match.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, that would be like, uh, I think it was twelve feet or fourteen feet when it was all done with the curb cut.
That seems narrow for the width of park. The maximum is eighteen width.
For, 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 yeah, for a single family house. It's, it's larger for multifamilies and commercial properties. It's twenty-four feet for those and then thirty feet for industrial.
Alright. I'm gonna have to make sure we're done with questions for these folks.
So I want to go back to the timeline. So then obviously it's going to cost more, right, to have that compacted down and done sooner, right?
Yeah, there, there's always a chance it's concrete. It, it's, it's a much better project at the end if it has time to, to naturally settle.
Right.
Um, you, you seen it when they're building, uh, the road up on, um, Kamikaze Curve, they had to go back in and, and dig some up and redo it because they build roads too fast. That, that's the only thing, but if, if it's, if it's something you guys require, I don't have a problem with.
Right, I mean, if, if you can't have a stone gravel driveway in the city of Binghamton, then you, you know, I guess what I'm asking, then do you if we approve this, you would guarantee that you will move and, you know, on it and not, not leave it.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Tito.
I want it done.
Would be the maximum length of time that he could keep it that way while they're doing construction. Work that requires a permit has to be done within a year. Uh, I don't know if this requires a permit. I think he needs a permit for the retaining wall. But not for the driveway per se, so there's. So why couldn't he? You, you said he, he's got the permit for a year. So why couldn't he do what he's doing and let it settle for that period of time? Cause he's, you said it's within the year. Yeah, so, so what the regulation says is that it can't, uh, a parking area or driveway can't be gravelled. And he stated that he would be parking vehicles and things on it while it's settled. Um, and that, that would be a violation of that regulation. I guess there's, it's sort of a gray area where he could leave it for a year, but parking on it would be the illegal activity.
Okay.
So he'd be using.
Just spinning a figure.
I suppose, uh, I mean. Yeah.
Which wouldn't work.
No, you're on poor concrete game, right? I mean, it's really, it's just not, it's not supposed to be done, I guess. You're supposed to complete the driveway and then park on it.
Okay.
I understand where he's coming from because.
It depends when he starts it, you know, once it, if it gets approved.
Well.
Yeah.
Do we have many more questions for the applicant?
I mean.
I got, I got just one question. If, if that's the case of the, the thing, um, if we get a variance and everything, is there, is there a time that it has to start? Like if we waited till, instead of doing this and not getting it through the winter, if we started next spring, had our, had our contractor all lined up and he comes in and does it and it's, and it's done and over with, our variance is still good next spring, correct?
Correct, yeah, you've got one year.
Okay.
He said, so you got till July.
Okay, alright.
Or August, whenever you get the.
We can live with whatever you guys say on that.
Yeah, the, the variance wouldn't expire, um, but from whatever you put in the building permit, you'd have, you'd have a year from that point. So there's no, there's nothing saying that you would have to start the project uh, anytime soon.
Okay.
But once you start it, you have to complete, complete it in a timely.
Yep, the variance stays with your property.
Well, the contractor wants to get paid, so he's gonna finish it.
This is a good time to consider opening a public hearing. Unless you had something you wanted to, and stick around, we may have questions for you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to, uh, make note for the record that this is a secret type two, requiring no further environmental review. And I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for numbers eighteen Kendall Ave. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Public hearing is open. Anyone liking to speak in favor or against the proposed variance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, board members. I'm Jeff Platsky at twelve Kendall Avenue, uh, three doors west of this property. I've lived there for thirty-six years, thirty-six, thirty-seven years with my wife, Darsby Pareski. I'll keep my comments brief because, uh, I've covered enough of these meetings. As a journalist, you know, I get no points for long-windedness and I may get penalized long-winded. So I'd just like to say I have concerns with the project and I'd like the board, please assess the impact on the nature, the the character and the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And note that this project is requesting a thirty-nine percent deviation from the existing regulation. Thank you for, uh, hearing me out.
Thank you. And, uh, Tito, I will note that, uh, Mr. Platsky has also submitted a letter to the, to the city, and we have a couple other letters as well.
Of two.
Oh, okay. You wanted to speak also? Come on down. I don't want to exclude anybody. I'm so tickled to have people here to talk. And not just me.
You can do a lot of talk.
I do. Don't tell, don't tell Bob.
You're very good at it.
Hi. My name is Kathleen Howell.
Hi, Kathleen.
The, the, um, property is in the name of Louis Howell and Kathleen Howell. I live directly across the street from property. I was just I, I'll keep my comments brief too. I'm just curious. After forty-two years at seventeen Kendall Ave. Upkeep, after the house paid for, kept beautifully. I, I hardly know what to say. I'm looking at a broken black top and mud drive by forever. I don't know why. I maintain my property. I just think I deserve that.
Uh, it's up to you. I, I can read the, so we got one letter from, from Mr. Platsky, one from Mrs. Howell. And we got one more. Uh, I can read that one if you want, or however you want to do it. So this is from Martha Watson, also Kendall Avenue. I'm opposed to the request by the homeowners at eighteen Kendall Avenue that they be allowed to expand their driveway to twenty-five feet. It seems to be a very large expense of concrete suitable for something very large to be poured there. I feel it will alter the character of this block. And create an eyesore. It's not something I would want to look at on a daily basis. Yeah, the other two referenced the, the siding on the house being incomplete. The parking of an RV as well, sorry.
Can't hear me up there, can you?
These guys don't want to hear me.
Is it possible they had one more thing?
Sure.
Uh, down on Beth's Lab, right directly behind me. Uh, I don't even know if the gentleman went and got a variance or not, but he paved half of his front yard. His green space is less than.
Right across from the MacArthur School.
Exactly, exactly, and he's parking for, parking several vehicles.
Yeah, I noticed that one that went in.
Yeah, and, and he, he didn't go for anything. We're just trying to make the plates look really nice.
They mixed that up in wheelbarrows, didn't they?
I really have no idea.
Pretty sure they did. I, I was watching them going like, what the heck are you doing? And it's all sloped like that.
Right.
Have you seen that one? It's right across from the exit from MacArthur School on Beth's Lab. It's hard to miss if you're driving, uh, eastbound on Beth's Lab because the concrete sits up at you and reflects right at you. Yeah, that's an interesting one as well and quite wide. And I would doubt there was a permit for that. But I mean, it's impossible to catch them all. Yeah. Sure, shoot.
Question, the break. In thinking of the neighbors and their complaints, is there, are there code violations in, on their property now?
There are, there is an open violation for, for the siding, um, and the exposed sheathing and things. Um, it, uh, and I believe for peeling paint.
What is, I, what does that mean, an open violation? Is there some sort of? So where? Where would it be at then?
It's, it's scheduled for court, uh, later this month.
Right. Now I want to know, I mean, if that's the pop, you know, if that's some of the neighbors' concerns, then, then, you know, they're legitimate concerns if there's code violation, I would say, in my opinion.
Can we consider that? I mean, it is.
I can clear that up a little bit. We did see the judge. And because of the, the medical condition that I was in, he granted me, uh, till July twenty-eighth on the old permit. He said if the city granted me a new permit, I would have one year to do it. The city granted me one, uh, of a new permit. And so I have a year to do that, but it's going to be done here in, in the next couple of months. It will be done. Before winter will be done, the siding. It, it's all done except for one small section on the east side uh, from the fireplace to the corner of the house and the front of the house has already been started. Um, the, we put an addition on in the front of the house and it's gonna be really pretty and everything. And that's, that's already a third done. Yep, so, yep. So, um, yes, and, and siding's all bought, everything's all bought. It's just my condition. I can only work so much on it. And that, that's what the problem is there. But we were granted them one more year when we got the permit.
Sorry, I don't see anybody else present, uh, wishing to speak, so, uh, no more letters. We've got them all covered. Uh, and I would move to close the public hearing for eighteen Kendall Lab. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? That gets us on to the deliberation. And, uh, I'm, I've got to, I've got to ask again, um, if, if traffic sticks to eighteen feet. I mean, is there, what, how does that whole process work?
So they'll review the request, um, and if they don't see a potential traffic problem or hazard being created. They'll typically grant it. They just granted one at the last meeting for, let's say, twenty, twenty feet.
For residents?
For a single family house on the west side, yeah.
If they did deny it, they would just angle it from the curb out to their.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, right. They would have to keep the existing apron.
Yeah.
And.
No, I. So I'm, I'm assuming that's a non-conforming driveway as it is. But since it exists, pre-existed that code sections, it's okay, and okay to maintain.
Yeah, if it was, if it was put in there illegally, it's, it's grandfathered in, so to speak, legal mind conforming.
Just, just thinking.
So I have a question. So the variance is to make the driveway twenty-five feet wide, where eighteen is the maximum width. But it looks like they, you intend on extending it?
It looks like it's about fifteen feet wide now.
No, I'm saying make it longer.
You, you want to park all the way back to the, to be equal to the back of the garage?
But do you need a, you, you need an additional part of the variance for that or no?
No, there's no maximum length of the driveway. The maximum proportion of your lot that you can pave, but he's not, he's not hitting that number.
That was my question.
Right.
They're not near that.
No.
Because they have the side yard for the side.
Right. So. Okay, so on, on, on the back of this driveway, it looks like it says it's going to be four foot wider. So that right now that's at twenty-one foot, correct?
Probably. Well, that's from where it's at. There's like a little, uh, drop off.
Right, there's the retaining wall right here. I see that. So they're gonna remove that retaining wall, bring it out here and just make it four foot wider in the back there. So it looks like that's almost three quarters of the driveway now. That's, that's twenty-one foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and all he's gonna do is widen the front of the driveway. I don't see a problem with it.
I don't either. It's not much.
And it's gonna clean it up because the driveway is, like you said, isn't disrepair, it is. I'm looking at both pictures.
To me, some of the letters complain about the condition.
Yeah, I understand if, if he's gonna, he's finishing things and he is injured right at the time and he's, he's doing it. You can see by these photos that I have here, whoever took them. The houses, and you said it was done even more than what it is now, and he's working on it, so I, I don't see an issue. I'm sorry, I don't.
I, I will also note, there are a number of driveways on adjoining houses where the driveway is here and the neighbor's driveway is right here. And to be honest with you, they look almost identical to that, and they're in about the same condition, a lot of them.
And it looked like this might have been an adjoining driveway to that piece of property that was there at one time. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what it kind of looks like to me. So, and then they combined the property in the one. Like you said, I mean, if that, he left it the way it was, he could have put an eighteen foot driveway in there.
And having it complete and repaired is gonna make it huge.
Yeah, that's gonna make it a lot better.
In his current condition, it, it does not look, I'm sure you see it every day driving out your driveway. Um, seeing a nice sheet of Ernie and I have had this discussion before, seeing a nice new sheet of blacktop kind of makes our day.
Yeah.
Concrete is even nicer. I'm very jealous of that neighbor across the way from you.
Oh, mine.
So let's get to the criteria. And discuss this. Uh, criteria, whether it's an undesirable change, is there a reasonable alternative? Is it a substantial request? Is, does granting the variance create an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? And whether or not it's self-created? Granting this eighteen feet versus, or twenty-five feet versus eighteen feet is an undesirable change. In some ways, yes, in some ways, no. I mean, a larger expanse of driveway is, I mean, it's not as good an environmental look. You have less, you have more hard surface. On the other hand, it's darn near that wide now and in quite a state of disrepair.
Right. And that, the other thing I consider with this property is they have the additional yard next to it to make it up.
Yeah.
Correct.
And it is the driveway almost that wide already. What it, what is that, maybe three, four feet?
It's four feet from the edge of the retaining wall.
To there, to the existing.
So you, I'm thinking that driveway is pretty close to twenty-one foot now.
That's what I'm thinking.
So they're widening it by four feet, except for the front. They're gonna square it off. Yeah, there's gonna square it off. Right, right. I don't, I don't see an issue with it.
That one to me is almost a offsetting. Is there a reasonable alternative? That's, that's an interesting concept. Is there a reasonable alternative? Could you go any less wide than twenty-five feet? Did we consider going anything less than twenty-five feet?
The, the concrete blocks that we're, we're putting in. It they're, they're made for that distance. Uh, we could go big.
Five at a time?
A, roughly, yes, yes.
Okay. That, that helps me understand how you get to the number.
Yep.
How do you guys feel about reasonable alternative?
I think it's fine the way it is.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna be sticklers, we're gonna want it to be eighteen feet. And make, and make them make it narrower than it is.
Right, that means he's gonna lose his backside.
And then he would just keep a little beat up.
Might as well keep the beat up, I would. That's just my.
Which wouldn't be too.
No, no, I agree.
Is it a substantial request? Yeah. It is. Almost forty percent of an increase from what's accepted by code. That is substantial. But when done, it's going to look substantially better than what it does now.
Correct. And like Ernie said, you've got that, he's got that property that's thirty-two foot wide on the other side where the driveway is going. I mean, there's a lot of green space there. So.
Is it gonna be an adverse, is it going, going to have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions? It, it is going to have some impact on, a little bit of runoff, a little bit.
Right.
Not a huge, but it's going to. Then again.
From what there is to what there will be, even left. Cause the driveway is wide already.
The driveway is in the vicinity of twenty feet wide. At least half of the length. It's that wide right now.
Right.
Twenty feet. Well, probably, probably over twenty. Cause that, that cart, that curb cut is eighteen feet. Yeah. And was it self-created? Yeah, sure. Yep. I, I, I don't know what the alternatives are here, and I do get the neighbor's point, but, that, uh, you want things to be done. I, I hear this at home all the time. You need to have that done. You need to get that, whatever it is, out in, in front of the house. It looks horrible. And I'm sure Ernie could tell me what those things are, just from his drives-by. You know, it, that's all funny, but what's best, what is best in the situation? I'm, I, I don't think best is to leave it as it is. And I don't think best is to put in what is prescribed by our zoning rules. So I don't think that's quite right. Is the twenty-five, is that really necessary? Or can there be some downside, downsides of that at all? I think the neighbors would like some, maybe something less than the twenty-five. Is it a possibility?
I'm gonna spend the money. I want to go, I want to do this thing. If, if we're not, I, I.
I, I get that.
Yep.
Is there any, any ability to make it twenty-four?
It, it, I can't get the block to go twenty-four.
You, you can make the forms out whatever width you want.
No, no, it's Binghamton Precast that does the blocks.
Okay, but your concrete driveway can be whatever width you tell them to pour it.
No, it's.
Are you laying in?
He's laying in.
Individual, there, there are the big retaining blocks. Pre-cast retaining blocks is what we're coming in.
Now I'm understanding what you're talking.
Okay, if you go up, if you go up to, uh, Rocco Distani's or Erie Material, you cross from the, the other side of the road from Binghamton Precast, they're doing a major project. And I love those blocks. The blocks are really pretty, really nice, and they would look very nice. The wall, it's the wall. It's the wall that determines how by, how big the driveway is.
Okay, now it makes more, okay, thank you. Thank you for.
I saw that, I saw that.
I didn't fully understand that. I, it would does make sense. So from the wall back.
So it is definitely multiples of five.
Yeah, that's, that's a way.
Okay. And is any of it poured at all? Any? No, I mean, when you're done, will any of it be poured?
If, if we just the apron? No, if, if we, if we go in, uh, in the spring, and if we get the variance, we'll start the job in the spring. I'll hire a contractor. He can tamp it, he can, he can do everything and we'll, we'll just get it done. I, I don't have a problem with that.
But it works out in even numbers of blocks all the way to the sidewalk?
The, the, the driveway itself isn't. It's blocks, no, the retaining wall is blocks.
The driveway is poured.
The driveway is all poured.
It's just the wall back by the, by the garage coming forward.
Back on this side?
Yeah.
Or back here. Yeah. That's the box. Okay. But those then can be any distance to this.
I would think.
So I'm back to my twenty, is it?
Right, it, the whole walk. Right, it, the whole walk.
They're five feet increments going this way. Not this way.
For the retaining wall. Yeah, in the back of the garage where we're starting the project. We're laying out the wall, that's the major part. Is in the back of the, where the back of the driveway is, yes. We're coming out fifteen foot there.
Okay, and that gets, that defines this edge.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. I'm back on track.
Excuse me.
Or three block fifteen.
Yeah.
If we did anything, we'd have to touch that.
And you couldn't open up doors and stuff.
No, I understand.
Yep.
We're just trying to understand what the.
Yep. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, then your driveway would be essentially narrower than it is now.
Correct.
Again.
Yeah, it's plus four, that'd be mine.
Okay. Any, anything else we needed to disclose here? And we make any? Decision contingent on other actions, other actions by the.
My, my concern is. Is, is the neighbors. And there, if you have an existing code. What do you call it? Violation. I'm still concerned about that, I understand that you've got an extension on it. If you're going to be investing all this money on a concrete driveway. Is there a possibility you could? Invest in having someone else finish it off? Which has satisfied the neighbors and the aesthetics of the neighborhood? No, I'm not asking you about the driveway right now, I'm just trying to make. Everybody happy, you get your driveway, the neighbors don't have to look at an unfinished project.
The house, the house will be done before the end of August. That's, it, it, it's on schedule to be done, but before the end.
We do a proposal, we could. Put that as a requirement.
Yeah, right. Yes. We, as we. What we're considering.
I have no prob, I understand the neighbor's concern. I truly do, I don't like driving into my own driveway and into, and look at the front of my house. The back of my house is beautiful, it's better than anybody's house back there. And the rest of the house, when it's done, it's going to be the nicest house in the neighborhood. I understand their concerns and I, I feel the same way driving in. I, I just did not plan on getting the problems that I've had. And I do apologize that, I apologize to my neighbors, I, I love my neighbors. I got the snowplow in business, when they come through with the snowplows, I, I drag out the neighbors' front yards or their driveways so that they can get out. I mean, I'm trying to be a good neighbor. So. I have no problem with that.
Okay, what we're essentially saying is, if, if we do go, and we haven't decided this yet, I'm just speculating. If we do decide to. Approve this variance in any way. We're likely to put a contingent requirement that that project is done before this can be. Started. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. You good game or you want to let Ernie?
Ernie, you want to? Proceed with this one?
Let me see if I have the.
If you don't, if you're not, if you're not.
I don't know if I have that.
I got it here, I've got it, I can.
I'm trying to go from paper to electronic.
No, I get it, I know, I'm doing both too, I've got, I've got it, but electronic and I've got paper ball. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve. For the widen, widening of the driveway to twenty five feet from. Approximately, it's at twenty, say twenty feet right now. At the backside and the front side might be eighteen foot. To a twenty five foot width. With his. And I don't know if we have to approve the retaining wall or not. That's going to go down there?
That's not.
No. That's not on here, okay, great. With a contingency. Before this project is started with the driveway, that the rest of the house. The siding on the house is, and whatever other. Issues there seem to be with the unfinished portion of the house. Be completed before the driveway is started.
And, and also to understand. The curb cut is contingent on approval from trap.
Right, and the curb cut is contingent on approval from trap.
The board.
Change your project. Right, that could change your width of your apron, that's all.
Okay, oh. Wait a second. Yes.
Last part of what you said, I don't think was clear enough to finish any issues, I think it has to be like code violations or something specific.
All right, to clear up all code violations? Yeah, all right, we'll do that again then. I'd like to make a motion to approve eighteen Kendall, the area variance to widen the driveway to twenty five feet. From its eighteen foot maximum that is allowed. To also, before any work is started on the driveway, to clear up all city violations, code enforcement violations. What else?
And, and with the knowledge.
You're right, and with the knowledge that the apron is contingent on traffic approval, traffic board approval.
Okay, and you got a second? All in favor? Good luck going forward, good luck neighbors. Hope you all. Get a chance to party on the patio. Alright. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming down, it's nice to have somebody else come down and comment. What's that, yeah? Yeah.
Alright, do we have any other business for us?
No, sir. Alright, then, I'd like to make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.
Uh-oh, you better get, oh, you're having a sleepover.